Six thirty, uh, I'm gonna call this study session of the city council order on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we got two items to discuss. First one is more of an update, uh, on the Integrated Water Resources Plan. A whole lot of council direction, which is kind of updated with processes. And then with the procurement policy changes, the second one will have more direction from council on how to proceed with that. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Who's who's back.
Different time zone.
Thanks, Barry. Good evening, members of the council. Um, first item tonight is the, uh, in the Integrated Water Resources Plan Study Update. This is a really important, um, topic for us as we, as we all know how critical water is. Um, you know, while Denver Water provides Littleton's, uh, those municipal water and really the vast, the vast supply of water to the community, it is real important that we, it's even more important than that we know what our, our resources are and we have a clear plan for how we're gonna use those, those resources. So, um, several months from now, staff will be back and we'll be looking for your, uh, direction. We'll have some recommendations. We'll be looking for your direction on, um, how to program that water, what those, what those decisions should be. But tonight, we wanna bring you up to speed on a lot of work that staff has been doing with our consultant partners who are here tonight. Just on what this, uh, Water Resources Plan Study Work has been, where we are, what we, what our findings have been so far. And then kind of, uh, give you a forward look of what the process is to engage the public, answer a lot of questions that we know are out there about, um, the options that we have. And then, as, as I mentioned, come back to you after that process with some recommendations and take your direction on which way to go. With that, I'll turn it over to Keith Reister, who can introduce our staff and our, our consultant partner tonight.
Before we do that, I figured I'd give him a quick update, Jim, if you want.
Sure. On water resources when it's not where we.
Our newest reservoir project. It's, when this first started yesterday, I actually, we were talking to the team and I said, just based on the name of the road, this is gonna go to the top of every news feed for a sinkhole in Colorado, since we're not the only ones. Um, you know, obviously, we've had a ton of rain, um, in the last thirty days preceding this. We've had more than twelve inches of rain in Littleton, um, according to the National Weather Service, which is about six times the normal during this period. Um, on the good side is we haven't turned down any of our irrigation here now in the city, which is great. So just need, uh, um, a quick, uh, a quick kind of background in this and I'll pop some pictures up here. Um, we do not provide free moat at this site, just as a side note, um, but, uh, you know, sometimes you, you know, you grab what you can for traffic control. Um, this one, it first appeared as a small pothole on the surface. On, on Monday at about nine, LPD reported a vehicle had become lodged in the sinkhole, uh, which is this, um, here. Um, we're, if it'd been smaller, like at Geo Metro, we probably could've just flow filled it in and gone on about a day. But, um, so basically, you can see what happened here. There was, um, the airbag did deploy. There was some minor injuries to the driver in that case. Um, LPD closed the road, um, and our staff jumped in there to help. So basically, what you have here is, um, I'll go back up here, might be here to explain. So Jackass, um, the gulch comes down through and there's two forty-inch existing stormwater pipes that come through there, um, east to west. Um, they were installed in nineteen eighty-five, so they've been there quite a while. Um, they are concrete pipe, which we wouldn't install this style of pipe today. Um, and, uh, there's also a water line that runs east to west, I mean, uh, north to south in there. But that only supplies irrigation for the open space that's in there at this point in time. So that's been stubbed off. So, um, the situation here is we are actually gonna be doing this work to replace these lines next year, um, as part of the mineral mobility shed construction. So, um, that work is gonna be accelerated is the game plan that we have come up with. Uh, we reached out to our partners. We're treating this as an emergency construction situation. Um, C T L Water, uh, Resources, who's done work with us as a contractor for a long time, um, has come in to help us here along with our own efforts. This was already in preliminary design because of the work a year from now, not complete design though. So we're kind of treating this, this emergency fix as a design build project in essence as we go through it. So as part of the, the design, because this, this whole drainage has recently, we've been in partnership with, um, Mile High Flood District to, you know, this is the oldest drainage plan that we have, um, so we've been working with them to update that. And as part of that, we're gonna go from two forty-inch inch pipes, which for those of you who are, obviously, is for demonstration. Two forty-eight inch pipes. No, you can do that. But we're gonna be replacing those with two sixty-inch pipes, which is, well, more like here for me. So, um, so they're gonna be going in there. We are fortunate, normally in a situation where you'd be putting sixty-inch pipe in, um, you would be looking at probably two to three months for fabrication. But our partnership with C T L's, uh, C N L's allowed us to, um, they did some great sourcing, tracked down a lot of things. So we were able to actually get the pipe, um, because it was luckily, it was sitting in a yard somewhere, which is pretty unusual. So, um, right now, we've got some bike and pedestrian detours in place, um, and we're in the process of figuring out the construction phase and the timeline, because the other alternative would be to basically, um, and I'll quote our staff, shove a thirty-six inch pipe through the ground and then tear it up again a year from now. So we're not gonna go that route. So, um, at this point in time, we're unclear about what the schedule is going to be, but it's, it's going to take more than a couple of weeks. We're looking at a longer timeline here. This is a, no matter what, this is a hard spot from a detour standpoint. It's, you know, it was constructed decades ago, um, in the way the transportation's laid out. So we're gonna expedite this as much as possible. Um, you'll be seeing a, uh, an emergency appropriation added to the appropriations ordinance coming up, because this is one of three sinkholes that we currently have in town. Um, we had one that evolved, um, a few weeks ago that you saw pictures of, not far, not terribly far from here, um, in the open space. And so the combination of that, if it just been one or one and a half, because the other one's smaller, uh, we'd have been able to float that in the stormwater fund, um, or in this case, cave in the stormwater fund. But, um, we're gonna need to add some supplemental appropriations. So Tiffany, um, and I'll be working on how we're gonna make that happen in preparation for this. So in the next few days, hopefully by the end of the week, we're gonna have a much better sense of what the, the schedule is gonna look like going forward for the reconstruction, but that's the game plan at this point in time now. Um, what caused, what was the causation of this is that, so you have the two pipes and the nor- the northern pipe started to fail. Um, and as Brent and I were joking, you'd rather have a big hole than a small one, because there's more hydraulic force than a smaller one. And so that eroded underneath, which then caused the failure of the second pipe. Um, you know, the, I mean, this infrastructure is, you know, forty-plus years old. This is not unusual. We would use different construction techniques today. So, you know, the install that we're gonna do now, we, we should be getting fifty, sixty years out of going forward, which is good. Plus, it's upsizing to the needs of the drainage, um, from a regional perspective as well. So that's the status of where we are.
Broadway?
Which one?
Wasn't there one on Broadway, right?
Yeah, the one, the other two we have are Broadway and Jameson.
Right.
And then.
There's one in Progress.
Right, one in Progress Park.
Just two questions, um, are these pipes gonna burst, like, anywhere else in this area? Can another hole develop on Jackass Hill or?
Only on your street, so, um, but this one, this is a drainage situation. Should have that whole, um, water drainage, stormwater coming down through these two pipes. So, uh, you know, we were a little disappointed that our name was Jackass, because Parker had a really big one the other day too. So, um, as is everybody, I mean, we're not excluded. This is pretty standard in the front range at the moment. Um, and so, uh, you know, in places like the Pacific Northwest, this happens a lot more. This is, uh, you know, something that we adapt to on an emergency basis and, uh, you know, and I can't say enough about, um, our, our, both our operations team and our engineering team and our work with PD to be able to respond to this, to come up with a solution. Our partnerships with, um, our contractors and, you know, our team in finance to help us try and figure out a solution to react to this. Um, that's all been, you know, let's just get this thing done. Let's move forward, um, which is a different approach. I mean, for those of you who have been long enough, we had a situation in Broadway a few years ago that was similar to the nest that just kind of kept going and going. And we are out there to make sure that doesn't happen this time around.
What about, um, tra- like, are they gonna open up one lane or it's just gonna stay closed off?
Let's, let's try to get back on the topic. You can email them later, because we have a hard stop at eight o'clock.
So the answer to that question is we'll hopefully know more by the end of the week. Okay. So with that, I will.
Coming out of their water resource plan.
Yeah, this is our new, our newest reservoir. It's open, so let me pop open our other. So, alright. Takes a second. So, uh, I'd like to introduce our, uh, my, our other team members here. We have Brett Soderland, our Deputy Director of Public Works and Utilities, and Jared Gaines from, uh, our Water Resource Engineering Firm, Applegate. Um, they've been with us for more than a year now on this project. And just to give you a little background again, so we started, uh, the city's never had a Water Resources Master Plan back in the early seventies. We transferred the vast majority of our, our water portfolio to Denver Water when they became our water provider. Um, we had a long history of struggling to provide water in this community, um, long before the flood in the late sixties. So the goal of this plan is to establish what do we have, what are our potential demands? And then how are we gonna plan for the future based on our demands and our goals? So tonight's discussion in this stage is really about an education moment to say, this is what we have. This is what our needs are based on what we know at this point in time. And then we're going, this is sort of almost the kickoff to the public engagement process, where we're gonna be out in the community asking questions, asking people about what they think their priorities are. And then we're gonna come back to you later in the year and really go through that discussion with you about what is the highest priority and where we should we be spending our money. Uh, I think, you know, you've seen this material accommodated tonight, but I think it'll be eye-opening. I think a lot of people believe that we have more water than we do, and it gets to different places, so this will be really interesting. So then I'm gonna turn it over to Brent and Jared to kind of jump in.
So I, just as an overview, um, first thing we'll, we'll be covering our purpose and need. We'll go over a brief history of our, our water rights. Um, we'll look at our water demands and recommend, well, not recommendations, but some alternatives for our three city parks, Geneva, Kettering and Ridgeview. And then we'll discuss what our next steps are, which Keith, you know, touched on, you know, we'll go back out to the public and, and get some more input. And then we'll have discussion on our water pool, portfolio. So our purpose was really to create a, a Integrated Was- Water Resource Plan to identify our water supply and our demands. Um, we haven't done a Integrated Water Resource Plan before. Um, the city is not a water supplier. In fact, Denver Water supplies all of our municipal water and they have since nineteen seventy. Um, the city does need a plan to allocate our limited water resources. And really, we have two parks, Kettering and Ridgeview, that have a limited, um, reliable water supply. Uh, Geneva's a little different. It gets, it's water from the city ditch, um, which irrigates, um, the city center here. So just a little history, so, um, before nineteen seventy, Littleton was a water supplier. Um, we had some difficulties supplying our citizens with water due to drought and our lack of water rights. And really, the final straw was in nineteen sixty-five, we had two five million gallon water tanks that failed and we lost a lawsuit. And so after that, the city started working on, or working with Denver Water to have them become our, our service provider. And so not, since nineteen seventy, Denver Water has provided our municipal, municipal water. And as a part of that agreement, we had to give up almost all of our water rights to Denver Water in nineteen seventy. So we did reserve our Antero Reservoir Rights, which is basically combined with High Line Canal, um, to help supply water to Kettering Lake. We kept our city ditch, water rights, um, a library well and a Gallup deep well for irrigation. And so the, the Water Services Agreement was updated in twenty eleven, and a lot of that background information is included in that task one memo. So this is our current water rights, and I guess I do wanna just emphasize that this is me trying to break it down into simple terms. There's a lot complicated, you know, and some nuances behind all of our water rights. Uh, but we'll start off with the city ditch. So Inglewood actually owns and maintains the city ditch, and they have a small water right within the city ditch. Uh, Denver Water actually owns most of the water right in the city ditch. And so we have, I believe it's point one-one CFS, which equates to this forty-six point seven acre feet over the irrigation season. And so next, we have the High Line Canal. And really, Denver Water's just discontinuing use of the High Line Canal. I know that the High Line Canal Conservancy is working on a deal to have the three counties take over the High Line Canal, which would be Arapahoe, Douglas and Denver. And so really, it's not a reliable source for us anymore. And next, we have our Antero Reservoir Water Right, which was two hundred and sixty-five acre feet. And of course, we conveyed that to Denver Water in nineteen seventy. Um, that was the water right that we were using to fill up Kettering at one point. Um, the state engineer did rule that that was not an appropriate use for that water. Um, I believe that Antero Reservoir Right was probably more suited for irrigation, you know, they used to irrigate that farm in that area. So next, we have our McClellan Reservoir Water Right. And so we actually have thirty-five acre feet, um, that Inglewood is to supply to the city of Littleton as a part of the McClellan Reservoir Water Right. And so nineteen acre feet is being used, um, for augmentation for Cooley Lake. And so that leaves sixteen acre feet that's available, um, that does not have a designated use. We are gonna have to negotiate with Inglewood to try to figure out how to get that sixteen acre feet. That's part of that nuance, you know, with our water rights, so.
Has anything been done about that negotiation?
So I'll, I'll answer that question. The answer is no, because the legal stipulation says that it's there, but the, the biggest challenge is it's very specific about where it must be delivered, which says the river. Up at the south end of South Platte Park. So no matter what. No, no matter what happens, it'll have to go through water court and go through negotiations with us. Or in angle to make a determination on where that might end up.
I'm still unclear. One of the options in further slides was to use this water possibly for Ridgeview Pond. You're saying now, no, you can't?
I didn't, no, I didn't say that. Everything, it's possible that that, you might be able to use it for other uses. But that other use still has to be defined because of the language that's in the actual decree, because it has very specific boundaries and it also has a very specific delivery point. So all that would have to be negotiated and go through water court to be validated.
And we haven't done anything?
We haven't had any intent to, because we haven't had a Water Resources Plan prior to this.
So we've done nothing yet, but we're planning on.
That work would have to happen if council, if the choice was made to prioritize that water, then we'd have to set the course for how to have that water delivered to a point that would be accessible where that can be used.
Never use.
For that purpose, but right now, it, it's not a, a practical point per the, a decree.
Is that a state water court? You said it has to go to water court?
Yes, Colorado has its own wa- waters court system, a separate court system, just in water.
Yeah, there's been a tea of an outcome that would, kind of a number of phases to the project. So one, which has kind of vexed the city for many years, has been identifying what current water sources, water rights, if you will, do we actually have, being as how we conveyed most of those to Denver Water. And so identifying those, identifying what the language is and their restriction is, is kind of what we've got through, um, at least in terms of this, uh, first part of the presentation. And then, uh, subsequently, once we've identified those sources, um, the next step would be to receive direction from council as to, you know, uh, getting either a decree, getting at least in Inglewood's case, an agreement with Inglewood. And then it's the logistics of where can we pull that water from? Um, where can, you know, and the costs associated with moving that water. It's not as simple as filling up a water truck and, you know, driving it up the hill. I mean, it's literally engineering, pumping, um, it's six-figure, seven-figure, it's easy. So, well, I think we'll get to that.
Alright, I guess I'll continue. So our groundwater water rights, so we do have quite a few. I mean, we have two thousand nine hundred and basically forty-four acre feet of groundwater rights. Um, right now, there's nine hundred and ninety-four acre feet that would not require augmentation. And there's one thousand nine hundred and basically fifty acre feet that would require augmentation. And I'm really only aware, and Jared, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we only have one well that I'm aware of, and that's the well we're using to try to fill up Kettering Lake, which is only producing about eleven CFS right now, which is very low. And, you know, so there is some potential there. Um, I believe that Kettering well cost us right around seven hundred thousand, like, six years ago. So, you know, it's an expensive endeavor to kind of go get those water rights.
Can you attempt to simply explain augmentation for the layperson?
I think of the same thing, so, yeah.
I'd be happy to do that. Um, so this specific water right, this is groundwater in what's called the Denver Basin, which is a large, uh, hard rock aquifer that was laid down millennia ago, and it's fossil water. It's not renewable. It's kind of a one-time use only. Uh, the decree allows you to pull that two thousand nine hundred and forty-four acre feet, that's per year, with the assumption that it'll last a hundred years. So the total volume is that times a hundred is what's in the. Um, augmentation, um, you have in that Denver Basin, you have what's called non-tributary water. And the very confusing term, not non-tributary water. It should probably just be called tributary, but, um, these have legal definitions. So non-tributary water means withdrawal of that water will have zero impact on, on the surface streams in any, uh, you know, human timescale. And so basically, you can pull that water, use it to extinction. It's not gonna impact the surface streams, which is all anybody cares about. So you can just use it. So the non-tributary water is pretty valuable, hard to access, it's deep, but, uh, it's pretty valuable in that way. The rest, the one thousand nine hundred and fifty acre feet, that's not non-tributary water. So what that means is the withdrawal of that water will impact surface streams within a hundred years. Uh, there's a certain definition of what that, uh, amount is. So what that means is you would have to make allowances to, uh, mitigate against that stream flow reduction into the future. Um, that can be difficult or hard depending on what the timing is. So it's much less valuable and, and people usually only use that in.
You have to, you have to, you can use it, but you have to replace it basically is what that is due. So that's where this water augmentation.
For a net zero effect on that stream system.
So you can't have a negative effect on anything else. So you can use it, but you gotta also replace it, so.
I'm afraid if I start talking, I'll confuse you, but yeah, essentially, having a junior water right, you would wanna be able to replace it, make it whole, so that you're not affecting the senior water rates.
Alright, continue. Sorry for that.
Oh, that's fine.
Just actually, then for, since we're talking about layman's terms, what does an acre foot mean for non-water?
So I, well, I can do this. So an acre foot, so an acre is about the size of a football field. And so an acre foot, basically, if you imagine a foot of water on top of a football field.
American football or Australian football?
American football.
Now, that's a cricket ground.
Yeah.
So you, it's a unit of.
Of volume that's really stupid, so.
Which is then equates to, the way we talk about it is, that would supply X amount of homes for a year, is how we typically.
It's a farming term, I think, for the acres of farm.
As a way to convey it.
Two average families of four for a period of year.
Was it?
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons.
Not that Reed's ever been through a discussion like that.
Alright, so our next one is our first chance, um, ditch water right. And so in two thousand six, city council, um, allowed the south, or South Suburban to use this water to develop Progress Park. Uh, but when we checked with South Suburban, Progress Park is really being irrigated with potable water. And so we're trying to dig in to where this four CFS actually went. Um, our water rights attorney is still digging into that a little bit. Um, we may have lost it at this point, but we're gonna, you know, really kind of check and see what happened to it.
CFS is cubic feet per second, some other.
Yeah, so a cubic foot per second.
Yes.
Um, basically, uh, a cubic foot, I imagine a, a basketball. And so it's, you know, how many basketballs?
Hey, basketballs, can you throw on a football field to cover it and basketballs?
Yeah, exactly, right. So I have all these sports metaphors for everything, but. So basically, you could, how many, four basketballs passing a point in a second, right? So that's four cubic feet per second.
How do you just lose water?
Say that you.
How do you lose, lose the water?
If that, if you lose it, well.
If that preparation.
Preparation. Oh, so the, the first chance ditch doesn't exist anymore. And I guess we kind of, we gave that away to South Suburban. I don't know if it's just.
So it, as part of this, like, an example would be, so over the hundred and fifty years, let's call it at Littleton, there's been multiple ditch companies which supply water, some privately held, some publicly held, some were, you know, Some privately held, some publicly held, some were, you know, the equivalent of HOAs in essence. And so if those water, if, let's say something develops or some other use, and they basically become abandoned in place. They're not being utilized, or that ditch isn't utilized. Then it can, the, on the water court's vision, in the water, the way the water law works is, it's an abandoned asset, an abandoned resource. So in this case, the first chance ditch company doesn't exist, and has not existed for decades. And there are no assets to it, no in-ground assets, and so it hasn't been utilized for years. So in essence, it's a, it's a wa- it's water on paper.
It's like a IOU on paper that you lost, and you know, water law is also very confusing and not, not as straightforward as regular law.
Usually it's used.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So did South Suburban just quit using it, or, I mean, are things with their?
No, it was, it looks like it was assigned, when the project was being developed, as part of the development process. It was assigned to potentially use for irrigation, but it's never been utilized, it's always been irrigated with potable water. And so as we've done the research, this one has come up, I mean, this dates back to the eighteen nineties. When we started looking at, you know, the documentation is basically on parchment, it's well, not quite, but close, so.
It is a, it's a very old water right. It still shows up on the state website, it's my understanding, but, you know, whether it's really there or not, I guess is something we need to dig into.
Yeah, so our water attorney has been tooling away on this particular one for several months.
And so really, our last is our total service agreement with Denver Water, and basically, they supply all potable water um, for full development of Littleton.
Is there any cap on that? What's full development?
Yeah, it's, there's, in the service agreement, there's a cap, but there are chances of ever hitting the cap, there's a number in there, are. I don't, there's, it's, we'd have to go annex a whole bunch of territory. We just, well, it's just not possible, I don't think, for us to get to that level.
And Denver Water has lots of water rights, very senior water, they have, they, they're the water kings.
I mean, they serve a million people, Denver Water Services a million people.
Alright, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jared now, and he's gonna go into even more detail on our our three parks.
Thank you, Brent, yeah, my name's Jared Gaines, with the app, got some calendars from our company, two thousand twenty-three, so they're not as valuable as they were. If you like some nice pictures, please take them. A lot of what I'm gonna go over, especially on this demands part, is in that task one memo from May first. So a lot more details in there, but just a general overview. There are three priority parks that we were told to investigate, Geneva, Kettering, and Ridgeview. And our first.
Do the question about the the priority parks, how did those three get picked, I mean?
So, the only parks that we service are Geneva, this park here.
Right.
Um, the other ones are ones that our water supply has been tied into supplying, which is Kettering. And there's been water in Ridgeview in the past with no water right. So as part of that, all the other parks that are currently irrigated are handled through South Suburban's water portfolio, not ours.
Okay.
So that's why we identified these three.
And so why doesn't South Suburban handle Ridgeview and Kettering since they're parks?
It's how it developed over time.
And all, but all, like Progress Park and Ashba and.
Those are all taken, yeah, in fact, in Ridgeview Park, all of that basically landscape that you see is irrigated by South Suburban's portfolio of water. The Ridgeview Pond has been a historical pond on and off over the decades, and there is no water right associated with it. So we, we wanted to find, we wanted to determine for sure if there was water rights to the pond, which then would lead to the discussion of what do we do in the future.
And what, and will future steps of this look at all the uh, water resources, you know, all the other ponds, the, you know, Cooley Lake, all the ponds?
Those are, those are all included in, those are very specific and included, like Cooley's within the South Platte.
Right, but.
And it's, we wouldn't have any dealings with those.
But is it, you know, it's within the city of Littleton, I'm thinking, you know, Littleton's water resource plan, we can at least have mention of it, talk about, you know, we should. Contemplate everything that we have and not just say, oh, that's South Suburban, because. Who knows what South Suburban is gonna do, and they'll say, oh, we're gonna give it back to Littleton.
We don't, we don't have that right, those water rights are theirs, it's our.
I know, but we can contemplate it in a plan.
We can acknowledge, maybe that these others are served by ex other.
Acknowledging, okay.
Their plan. Right.
Okay, like, it just gives the impression that these three parks have priority over everything else. Which I don't think that's necessarily the, what we want to necessarily see.
These are the ones where our water portfolio impacts these parks, just.
Wanna make that clear, that it's not, these are the three important ones, and everything else is not important.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay.
So our first step in this uh, task one memo was to estimate the water demands for each of these parks, and that's the three numbers you see there, acre in acre feet per year. And the only, last thing I wanted to talk about on this slide was this overview map. You see the the pink and like the teal colored area. Water is location, 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 maybe even more than real estate. So it really depends on where these parks are located, cause that tells you how, what water you can get to there feasibly. And so the important thing, I just would like the council to note, is that Geneva is under the the teal polygon, that is the city ditch service area. That's areas that the city ditch can service by gravity. And then Kettering and Ridgeview are both under the Highline Canal service area, so that's areas that the Highline Canal can service by gravity. So getting into the specific parks, we're gonna start at the north, uh, and talk about Geneva. So the demand estimate of sixty-one point eight acre feet per year, there are three types of demand at this park. It's your turf grass irrigation, which you're serving with non-potable water pulled from that pond. Evaporative loss and seepage loss. We're very confident in the irrigation demands and the evaporation demands, those are pretty well known. The seepage demands for all three of these parks are a real unknown for us right now. We had to do some assumptions based on soils underneath. We do recommend some monitoring. Over time to get a better handle on what the seepage rates are. So I just would like to point out, these seepage values may be grossly overestimated, uh, and your demands may be be far lower. So. At Geneva, your physical water supply is coming from city ditch, city ditch delivers water to Slaughterhouse Gulch. And then water comes down Slaughterhouse Gulch, and then is taken out of the gulch into Geneva Pond. Uh, is in a kind of continuous loop, it fills up and then spills out and goes back to Slaughterhouse, Slaughterhouse Gulch. So for this location, uh, we recommended potentially putting in a synthetic liner to reduce seepage losses. Again, I I really wanna stress the seepage estimate, that's the biggest component of these demands. We're not highly confident on that number, so before this would move forward, I would recommend doing some uh, measurements over a period of at least a couple of months to confirm what the seepage rates are, determine if a liner is even necessary.
Could you be o- underestimating the seepage rates, could they be higher?
I think we're probably on the higher end, if anything. Usually these, and the reason for that is usually these ponds uh, seal in over time with silt and suspended sediments. They get dropped out in this tranquil water and form a seal. And so I think we're probably overestimating, if anything.
Okay. We, we do know that this, in the time since we've owned this property in the early seventies, that it's never been lined, and we don't expect that it was lined before that, basically, what we knew.
And the water is flowing down into this one?
Goes down this way into the pond, and then if it, it goes out the other side.
Is there any pumping involved, there's, okay.
Yeah, we irrigate this whole complex with that.
Yeah, so water is pumped out of the pond for into the um, system, but it's all gravity fed, uh, up to that point.
It's gravity fed.
Next recommendation is an inflow measurement and recording equipment to uh, help with the administration of this pond, so you know exactly what you're getting. We've made some estimates on on what you would get based on the delivery rate. Uh, but some actual measurements would help, and um, hope you report to the state what you're using. And the last is a sediment trap to reduce the sediment load. We understand that a concern with non-potable irrigation at the park outside is that the water quality is not the best, and there's been issues with sediment. So an upstream sediment trap would slow the water down, let that sediment fall out in a location where it's easy to come in and remove. And then you have relatively clean water going to the pond and reduce the sediment load in the pond. So here, this figure is just kind of a, an overview of what we're talking about, you've got the synthetic liner diagram at the top right, but the important parts are. This blue line is uh, your delivery from Slaughterhouse Gulch. The orange square is where we would propose to put the measurement flume, and the red circle is where we would propose to put the sediment trap. Where again, it would settle out sediment, and you could come in with just some, eh, some equipment, light equipment, dig that out at the end of every year. And have relatively clean water in Geneva, improve the the quality of the water that's being used to irrigate the park.
The, the current pumping system in this lake is kind of, kind of resuscitated each season right now. To irrigate this complex.
Uh, so here's our cost estimates for these improvements. In total, we're looking at three hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars. That includes a twenty percent contingency, cause we're kind of at the very high level estimates at this point.
But that's without liner.
That is with the.
With the liner.
It is with the liner.
Yeah, the liner is the, the liner is the bulk, liner is the bulk of that, so.
But now, but there's not. But doesn't include new pumping system?
We, we've already, we've kind of got that already in some of our other planning.
Okay.
We have, there's a big investment, the issue is in the pond itself, that pumping side of the pond.
Of course, I know it has been said explicitly, but our ability to irrigate that with that, this complex with non-potable water is a big cost savings in, o- over time, over the, over the use of the potable water, so, yeah, that's why we would do this.
It augments our water bill.
So instead of paying Denver Water to use it as a water.
Instead of. Instead of.
We, we would be paying Denver Water to have enough water to irrigate this complex if we didn't use this system.
Right.
Do we know what that number is?
Um, we haven't calculated that yet, but it's gonna be, it would, I can say, based on our current utility bill for this complex, it would probably at least triple it in a minimum. And that includes all our other utilities.
So what is that in relation to this price tag?
We can, we haven't gone through that calculation, cause we're at a state.
We'll come back, we'll make a note to have that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so moving south, next uh, park we valued was Kettering Park. This park has four different sources of demand. The first is irrigation at the neighboring Littleton Museum. Which used to be something that happened from Kettering, but since uh, lower lake levels, the museum has transitioned over to Denver Water potable supplies. I believe they would prefer to use uh, non-potable water from Kettering if given the option, but, so for that reason, we included that in the demand estimate. Wetland irrigation, there are some wetlands on the north and south side of Kettering that are, uh, have evo-transpiration demands from cattails. So we included that as a demand, and then evaporation and seepage. Kettering Lake was and, did have a liner installed, uh, well, we'll get to that. So the water source for this lake, uh, it used to be. Water from Highline Canal. Water would be brought down Highline Canal and put into a a lateral ditch called the Arbor Ditch, and would be delivered into Kettering at the south side where that red star is. As you know, as we discussed earlier, Highline is becoming a less reliable source, Denver Water is wanting to discontinue it. So in, I think, two thousand. Yeah, like six, seven years ago, uh, a non-tributary Denver Basin well was constructed at the Arapaho well number one location. Into the Denver Basin, it's about eight hundred feet deep well, to pump non-tributary water from the Arapaho Formation into Kettering Lake and and fill it that way. When the well was first constructed, it was producing at forty-five gallons per minute, um, which was sufficient to meet the needs of of the park, and uh, unfortunately, with time. It appears that either the pump is failing, or there's a problem with the casing, uh, the well casing. It is currently only producing approximately ten gallons per minute, so.
Just not enough to fill Kettering.
Not enough, it is, which is why Kettering continues to go down. We're working with a well contractor to figure out what the issue is, which we'll get to in the next slide. Um, an optional.
Any warranty?
Also improvement here is to replace the PVC liner, it was, it did have a PVC liner and start, installed at one point. For the purposes of our seepage demand estimate, we assumed the liner was not working effectively.
And what is the expected life of a liner?
Great question, it's about twenty years, it was installed in two thousand three, so we're right there. Yeah, so this slide kind of shows on the left is a picture of the outlet of the Arapaho well number one, and it's ten ga- that's what ten gallons a minute looks like. And then on the right is a picture of the PVC liner, so when it was installed, it, does it appear that a lot of ballast was was placed on it, ballast and cover material? And at least along the edges, it's, it's washed away, and you can see that liner is in pretty sorry shape. Don't know what it looks like under the pond. I will say that I've taken some preliminary measurements over time from March through May. With some survey equipment when I was out there for other purposes, it looks like the liner is working. So I think our, uh, I think the seepage estimate is probably definitely on the higher end here. It does appear to be working right now, uh, it is getting to the end of its useful life, but um. That's. The need for a liner, I think, is uh, it's not certain, I guess is what I, what I'd say right now.
Just to add, you know, one of the things that's, that's not in here is, you know, it was supplied by Highline Canal in the past. But prior to the Highline finishing, the state engineer's office said, um, so being irrigation water, you can only hold it for seventy-two hours under state law, and that's irrigation water, and so for the last twenty-five or so years or more. The state engineer's office determined that that was not in compliance with state law. So they provided a show cause order to Denver Water about five years ago now, saying that that's not a permitted use. This is not, just so you know, it's not just a state, state engineer's office has been doing this all over the state, you know, through the, every drainage in the state. All those little ponds you see along, say, the Arkansas River, or is an example where they're doing the same thing. So either way, that what, we would have had to come up with a different way to put water in that pond, because the state engineer's office, it's not a permitted use for that Highline water to go into this pond, and in essence, be used for recreational purposes, alright Reed?
A hundred percent. Yeah, that wouldn't address anything.
Pardon?
Right, I'm sorry.
No, I'm disagreeing with Keith, that would, yeah, even if Highline was being actively used by Denver Water right now, that would not solve our Kettering partition.
You would have to drain a lake to put that liner, dude.
Uh, fortunately, you would.
Yes. Yeah, they can't put some heavy rocks on.
We tried a car in there. You know, the police records, but, so.
Yeah, when they drained it, they were finding fish in there like sixty inches long, grass cats, oh, huge, it was like. Grass carp? Yeah, yeah.
How much was that well, how much did it cost to to put in that well, Arapaho well, and did the city of Littleton have to pay for that?
No, it's also. Yeah, it was like roughly seven hundred thousand.
And that was when?
That was sixteen, I think.
Seventeen, I think.
Yeah, and it was a combination of us and South Suburban at the time. Um, and the, when I arrived here, there was some, it was unclear who is responsible for maintenance, ongoing maintenance of the pump system itself. Um, which we've kind of worked through that with South Suburban, but without question, the the well needs work.
And you said it was seven hundred thousand?
Yeah.
No, it's also my understanding that when the decision was made by council to to go forward with the Arapaho well. Even with the the well functioning the way it was hoped to be, it was never going to necessarily solve all problems. I mean, it was really just to offset the evaporation that was occurring, um, and some of the seepage that was being mitigated by, um, you know, the underlay.
That, that's correct, cause there was a a discussion about having another well, I think it's on the north side, I think it's a different article for, we talked about doing that.
So, um, I'm not aware of those conversations based on our estimate of the demand, uh, especially if we can take out that thirteen acre feet of seepage. I think repairing the well back to its roughly forty-five gallons per minute capacity, that would produce enough water to meet all of these demands.
Is it ever a wetlands area before it was a lake?
Kind of on top of hill.
I am not sure.
There's, there's no, uh, what is in the Denver area, natural.
It's, when.
Right.
But when you look at it, it's designated actually as a gallop reservoir prior to the name, the Kettering name. So it was, it was a reservoir at some point designated as such as a collection point.
That's when the, the guy who had that, that house built it for his wife, and it's kind of on a hill.
For your agriculture.
Yeah, it's going up, yeah.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I, I would impress that you built that for your wife, Jerry.
And she's still my wife.
Um, so here's a summary of the costs that we are anticipating for Kettering. Uh, the well rehabilitation quote that we received from the contractor is roughly seventy-six thousand dollars. So roughly ten to fifteen percent, I guess, of the original cost. So roughly ten to fifteen percent, I guess, of the original cost of the well. Um, the liner, which again, I want to stress, is is optional, um much higher, a million and three quarters. So that's that's the bulk of the estimated cost here for Kettering.
Just for timekeeping, we have forty-five minutes until we have our.
Di- Tiffany said she's gonna be really quick on the next one.
Can you go back two slides?
Keith says he's taking your time, Tiffany.
Two slides?
The evaporation slide.
So if the remediation was done to the well, it would offset presumably if it went back to forty-five gallons per minute, it would offset the seepage and offset the evaporation, so there wouldn't necessarily be an immediate need to replace the liner?
Uh both of them, just because it's all thirty-five.
Um, forty-five gallons per minute will produce in the range of seventy-some acre feet, so actually, if rehabilitated to its original condition, it could meet all of the demands.
It would keep up.
It would keep up with everything.
Because it dropped off really quick, it went from whatever was estimated to barely trickling.
We get a extended warranty with the.
Fortunately, those pumps have a year warranty.
Yeah, one year warranty.
It doesn't serve a like a purpose beyond people enjoying it, correct?
Aesthetics, yeah.
But right, because the museum no longer uses it and.
And the wildlife.
So that is Kettering, last park that we were asked to evaluate was Ridgeview. This one only has evaporation and seepage demands, it's a much smaller pond, so the other ones had ru- roughly sixty-two acre feet of demands a year, this one only has roughly four. Again, seepage, haven't, we're not sure about that number. The water source for this pond uh was historically a reservoir via Highline Canal. Uh at least that is what we are proposing would be done, so let me back up. Historically, water would come down uh Highline Canal into this drainage and would serve a kind of cascade of three other ponds and then into Ridgeview. And Ridgeview would, uh it's got a storm outlet set up pretty high, maybe ten, fifteen feet high from the bottom. Fills up to there and overflows and goes out the storm drainage. So uh with Highline no longer being ser- serviceable, not delivering as much water as it used to, that pond has markedly gone down. What we evaluated as a likely potential solution is taking that McClellan water that we discussed earlier, that uh sixteen acre feet granted to Littleton by Inglewood that is currently being unused. Take that water out of McClellan Reservoir, put it into Highline, pipe it approximately four miles down the Highline alignment. Put it into the drainage that originally did and flow it down to this this pond. Sixteen acre feet that you have left is more than enough to meet the demands here. I want to that asterisk under the first bullet, contingent on Inglewood agreeing to allow withdrawals directly from McClellan Reservoir. There's there's two reasons why that's an asterisk, um and the stipulation that was granted Littleton that water, there's there's two sentences in there that could be problematic. Um, the first is that the water was designated for augmentation of Cooley Lake and other municipal uses. Is the storage in this stor- stormwater pond in a municipal use, that's probably up for debate, that's something that Inglewood may quibble with. The la- the other sentence that is potentially problematic is it is to be delivered to the confluence of the South Platte and Dad Clark Gulch or any other location selected by Inglewood and acceptable to Littleton. So it's up to Inglewood to agree to you pull the water from McClellan, they don't technically have to. And uh so that's why that asterisk is there. Our recommended improvements to do this would be a new pump at an existing wet well in McClellan Reservoir. Wet well is just basically a a structure where reservoir water can flow into and then gets pumped out of, there's an existing one owned by Centennial. It would be super easy for us to just drop a pump into if they would allow it. So that's the purpose of the two asterisks. And then a new four-mile PVC pipeline along the Highline Canal alignment to prevent lots of losses. If we we assess that if you, you know, tried to deliver that water without that, you'd you'd lose a lot in transit and not a lot would get, would actually.
All those trees would suck it up.
Have we ever talked to Centennial about this use of a wet well?
We 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 wouldn't entertain that discussion until we worked with Inglewood.
So you have to do Inglewood first, you have to look at McClellan first, and this would be a backup, okay, it's a priority.
Yep. Well, it's not a backup, it's, it would be part of the system, if Inglewood didn't say yes, then this wouldn't be an option, that wouldn't be an option.
Some people.
We'd have to pay for that, correct?
Say this again, if Inglewood did say yes or didn't say yes?
Oh, absolutely. If Inglewood said, no, you can't use it, then then.
It's done.
No point talking to Centennial.
Then it's a done issue at that point.
Because they, how do they control the, I'm missing something, how do they control the Centennial wet well?
They they control the entire reservoir.
They own all the water, but they have the.
So they control the wet well, yes, okay.
Centennial wet well would be part of the system that would draw the water out of McClellan, first we have to know that we can use that water.
Yeah, the water is only.
And then you talk to Centennial.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
In this four mile of PVC pipeline, it would have to go under the existing canal?
Um, we would use the existing alignment, you would likely want to bury it, uh doesn't have to be super deep, it's not gonna be run during the winter, so freezing isn't a huge issue, uh but yeah, you you'd wanna use the alignment so it'd be in the canal but covered.
So you're pumping the water uphill?
No, uh actually, so Highline Canal is is gravity uh through here, so it's only a short section to get from the reservoir here, uh next slide.
Okay.
From the reservoir into the pipe, yeah, pipe.
Basically at my house to draw it from the reservoir.
Alright, so it's kind of hard to see, but there on the south side of McClellan Reservoir, uh where that pin is, that is where Centennial's wet well is. So that yellow line is the pi- is the pipeline to, it's pressurized where you're pumping water from the reservoir to Highline Canal. Once it gets to Highline Canal, it's gravity all the way to Ridgeview.
Let me, let me just ask real quick too, so McClellan Reservoir, if I can remember, it's behind South Park, the neighborhood South Park, right? That reservoir got super low this summer. It was so low, so how could, even if we got the approval from everybody, where's that sixteen
You could be coming from.
magic number coming from, if that gets low again, I mean, right now, it's like you know, it's almost flooded in South Park, it's super high because of all this rain, but historically, if you're looking at it, it got it was dried up.
So that's the reason, first of all, that's the reason for the wet well, it's installed at the lowest part of the reservoir, so if there's any water in the reservoir, you'll have access to it. Second of all, um whether the water is there to take, that is why getting Inglewood's approval to take the water from McClellan is so critical.
Got it.
Seems like a good time when they're trying to put piping through the ditch system there, whether we're drinking water.
Would cost money. Got it.
They're not going through our ditch system, that's completely different life.
Well, Inglewood.
I know.
Just saying negotiation wise.
So.
So.
So yeah, so the the proposal would be
Sure.
Pi- uh pump it to Highline Canal PVC, that blue line for the four miles. It gets to the turnout where the red line starts, the water will have to go through those four neighboring ponds, so there'd probably be some they are having their own issues, legal issues, keeping their ponds full, uh.
Those ponds are private property.
They are. They are private ponds, so uh there'd probably be some coordination ensuring that they pass those flows onto Ridgeview. But that is the proposal for for this site, and here is the estimated costs to do that. Um totaling roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to deliver this water.
And this includes this four mile, four miles of PVC, okay.
Yes.
It, just as a note on all of these, anytime you see a pump, we have ongoing maintenance costs. And as we've seen, they only have a one-year warranty, so it's an ongoing maintenance cost, of course, no matter what, all of these scenarios, that's part of the equation.
What about the liner for Ridgeview?
Um, we did not recommend a liner for this one, um given the small amount of of seepage, um so we that is not included in this cost. Um, we were told that there may be a liner underneath the bottom, Ridgeview, not along the sides though, so.
Yeah, because you can see the sides.
A- as opposed to a bathtub, it's more like a laundry basket, is the way I would describe it.
That's a whole shower basin.
Mm-hmm, just, yep. Well, it's holding the sides.
So this this slide summarizes the cost estimates we're looking at for each of these parks, Geneva here, ninety-six thousand, Kettering, over two million, but again, I really want to stress, that includes a very expensive liner replacement. If we're just looking at the well rehab, it's it's seventy-six grand. Ridgeview, yeah, four hundred and fifty thousand.
So next steps is for us to meet with the residents this summer and discuss some options for our three parks. Obviously, complete the integrated water resource plan and then come up with some future capital improvement projects, you know, to I guess, solve some of our water issues.
Right, so this.
What do you hope me to get from the residents, I mean I know we want to do community engagement, but it seems to me, so water, not pot.
So. Well, so there's, there's two parts of that, so in addition to this, we also have our own, um for the city facilities that we service, including medians and all those kind of things, we're, we've just completed an irrigation analysis for those. You know, to to sum that up, most of our infrastructure for delivering irrigation to our own stuff is forty-plus years old on average. And as the consultant said, usually they say, people say, ah, so bad, and we come in and we tell them it's better, in your case, it's actually the opposite of that. So we're going through that estimate now, uh we've included money in three A as we go through some of those renovations to tackle that, so that's gonna be merged into this. From a community engagement standpoint, there's there's multiple parts to that, the questions for us are, um you have an environmental stewardship committee that's talking about resource conservation. So as part of the long-term water resource conservation plan, what are our city goals related to water resource conservation? That's number one. The second part of that is, is if, say, coming out of that is a discussion that says like, you know, we've heard some things about things like turf grass, incentives for turf grass replacement. Well, that's something that would have to be worked out over several years with Denver Water, since they're the water supplier that then impacts. Um, so that would be part of it, and then the other part of this is, is part of the reason we put the the scope on these three parks and the cost estimates for those is because um when it comes to your resources and dollars, there has to be a prioritization. And we're gonna be asking you, be a recommendation, to make a prioritization at a later point this year. And so as part of that, um I can say, having attended um uh public meetings related to virtually all of these parks, um that there is strong feelings about in certain parts of the community about certain parts of these parks and whether or not they should have a water this feature or not, and so that's why we felt it was important to bring that into the discussion, so people could voice their opinion. And also say that, you know, hey, if it's gonna cost this much to do this, maybe it's a better priority to do this. Or maybe we shouldn't necessarily invest in this, since in a long term, and of having a water feature in this park is maybe not in the best interest of the city over the next thirty or forty years, that's the question that we need to ask the community, is those kind of things.
Well, that was part of my question, I I was asking Jim, uh what's the other option, we don't do this?
Um, well, in the case of, let's just, I'll give Ridgeview an example, so we did some neighborhood outreach with South Suburban. If the decision was made to not proceed with a water feature, we would still have to have a small storm drainage through there, but then that portion of the park would be reprogrammed into something else, probably fill, add it, or do some other things, but that would be reprogrammed between us and South Suburban in the neighborhood. Um, is what would happen. You know, I've heard some other things related to Kettering, and then this one is a different dis- Geneva's a little bit different discussion, because this is our complex here, we have to talk through the costs of infrastructure, we're continuing to irrigate also, what what does that impact our on our forest here, for example, on Geneva Park? So that's that's part of that discussion, we could certainly turn the water off to all of them, that's always an option, so.
I think the additional purpose for the public engagement is also, well, yes, we will be soliciting opinions. We also want to be able to hear questions, have the discussion with people who do have strong opinions about those various places, so you know, I think that's where we've all seen, we've all uh re- received emails, even since the uh the, since this plan has been, you know, released, um that I think re- really could could use some time thinking through those questions, responding to questions and having that dialogue with the community, and that's that's where that'll happen, so that when we uh come back to council, we'll have, I think, um you know, a little more clarity on those suggestions from neighborhoods, um and we'll also be able, we'll also have have thought through, you know, th- those answers and and have some recommendations for you that hopefully can um at least address those interests that we've heard from the those those neighborhoods. You know, re- regardless of of what council's decision will be, we'll be able to at least speak to those clearly.
So I may be jumping ahead to your third bullet, so community engagement's going to take how long, and then what do we, then after that, we complete the resource plan, then after that, we're in a position to have council give direction on priorities?
Our our intent would be to do the community engagement over the next couple of months, we'll be back to you um in the fall um to talk through what all of that and what we would recommend based on all this information, what we've heard, what we think the future is related to resource conservation, and let you, at the end of the day, settle on what those priorities are. The other thing that's, you know, what what Jim and I have talked about coming from cities that are water providers, for example, you know, thi- this discussion is in almost every other jurisdiction took place decades ago. You, uh your priorities for allocation of water were decided decades ago in almost every other community, because we don't have a water plan, that's why we're doing this discussion now.
So let me make sure, so summer is engagement, then you come back and then we prioritize, there's no more, we don't have to do anything more to the the water resource plan, that's kind of done.
Well, the water resource plan, the final adopted water resource plan would lay out those priorities, because you're setting the precedent in the planning for the community for, you know, the decades to come, much like we do with the transportation plan or the comp plan, that's what the goal of this is. And then, based on what comes out of that, is how we would then build any capital investment or maintenance planning around the goals that council has set related to water resource management going forward.
Could we get that in time for the next budget cycle, or is that too ambitious?
I don't, I don't think we'll be ready for the next budget cycle, but I can say that if you look at the map, the bucket categories in three A, we've we've set aside money to continue to work on uh water resources and irrigation, so there's a holding place for some type of investment if necessary.
So we wouldn't have to, even though we missed the budget cycle for this year, we would still, we could start something
Correct.
depending on what the priorities.
Yep.
There would be design and all that kind of work that was a proset of Jeffles project costs.
Yeah.
Right, but it it we wouldn't be hamstrung by another budget cycle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Start.
You've already started the budget, I tell you.
For this year, yes, and Keith's kind of keeping these costs, you know, we've got some s- the typical percentages that you might need for design.
Yeah.
That would have died.
We'll be building in some some share of of what we what we could need, so that we can get started on on that.
Just to make a quick, I'm sorry.
No.
What? Um, to make a quick point, the cost estimates also don't include staff, time and labor and whatever a water rights attorney costs, which I'm assuming is something like a million dollars an hour or?
Well, that, right now, Reid and I joke about that, because it gets charged the hitch budget versus ours, so we we actually joke about that.
Clever point.
But I think with the numbers that we saw on there, just like, maybe in general, in general, like, it could, you know, even if we were to say cut down, change, you know, the engineering design change type of liner, those numbers still don't reflect the time and effort it would take us and our staff to do all this work.
So these are, these are, you know, engineering estimates, the next stage in.
So they're always so precise, right, they're always what they get.
That's correct. That's right, I mean, so the goal of this is to provide context for the discussion as we proceed, and if if a decision is made to go down a certain path, that's where the the really in-depth engineering and design goes forward to move forward.
And all three of these ponds, facilities are part of, you know, within the context of mile-high flood, are also stormwater management facilities of some type, or has that even been loaded?
Ridgeview would probably be.
Ri- um Ri- Ridgeview is part of the stormwater system, um we've actually talked about
Yeah.
making some minor adjustments um in Aberdeen Village, because there wasn't a lot of storm drainage built when Aberdeen Village was built, to move some of their storm drainage down to Kettering, i- it's not gonna be a huge impact at all. Um, so we've talked a little bit about that as we go through the improvements to Aberdeen Village. Um, Geneva, um all of our stormwater basically just spills down down the gulch.
Right.
At that point.
That was, one of the questions I was gonna ask is to have that that stormwater use and value as part of this plan as well, because, you know, like Ridgeview is, that's, I mean, it's it's stormwater for each, you know, first and foremost.
The stormwater's a little tricky, I mean, Keith had mentioned the seventy-two hour rule, I mean, you can't really hold stormwater longer than seventy-two hours, you need to pass it down. So it's it's a little complicated, yeah.
That's a state law.
So it's not a ponding.
Right.
Right, right.
Because that's where it doesn't have any village, it pones on our streets. In yours.
You you have plenty of water features out there, Jerry. You, you have plenty of water features out there, Jared.
Right this week.
Would it be fair to say without the priorities, that Geneva, because of its proximity to the city ditch, probably has a, a solution that's doable? Kettering, the well, probably has a situation that's doable. And the hardest one to figure out is Ridgeview. Is that, I mean, I'm, I'm summarizing, I'm summarizing at the highest level.
They're dual-aisles.
Oh, yeah.
It's the cost benefit that.
Yeah, everything is doable, so it's weighing that cost and benefit, as Jim said. And, and that's part of the reason why we wanna do the public engagement. We wanna meet with you is, and let you think about those priorities. And, you know, and the other thing out there is, is you know, one of the things I've said in a few community meetings in the past, like, let's take Kettering, let's, 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 let's get to a point, all of a sudden, we realize that we can only produce thirty-seven gallons a minute, for whatever reason. Do we make a decision to make that pond smaller? To keep it as a water feature or do something different, to, to modify to what we have? And I think that's part of the, that next step of the discussion, help us figure out where everything kinda settles out as we go through building this plan.
And it was made smaller this last go round too.
I believe so, yeah.
And that, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, I mean, apart from, this was just binary, you know, do nothing to this. I'd like to see having the options of reducing the size or filling in all three of them, you know, what, what that would do.
And the timing for us is important, in the sense that part of the reason we wanted this water resources plan is also tying into our efforts with South Suburban to do master planning for Kettering and Gallup. At the same time, to help identify those future paths as we go through it. So it's, it's bringing all of those features together to help us have that long-term strategy for the city.
And one thing with the community engagement, you know, to consider is, you know, the number of people who use each of these as well, you know. You know, we think, we're thinking citywide, you know, what's best for the entire city. You know, if one of them has thirty times the use, that might have more priority than.
We have certainly heard about thirty times as much concern about Ridgeview pond. And when you look at where Ridgeview pond is situated and the number of homes nearest immediately adjacent to it, I mean, it's a relatively small number. We're talking a handful, five, six, that directly back to Ridgeview.
So that's where we, you know, that's part of, part of our work is with South Suburban to understand the dynamics of the park and what are they doing and what are the uses? And how, how do we understand that as part of the discussion too?
Well, I, I think it's more than just the five houses that other people come to it.
Yeah, that's all.
It's true, but I think, yeah, you, you, with all the parks, I mean, there's no houses that abut the Geneva Village. I mean, you got.
Right, yeah.
Great. Anything else from us? Any other questions? Let's give Tiffany, uh, how many minutes here?
Nope, we, with. Yeah, so we appreciate that, Jared. Thank you. I can't, I wanna say that, no pun intended, but we would be dead in the water without our engineering partners and our, our water attorneys at this thing, so it's, uh.
I appreciate it.
That's been an interesting ride.
Thank you.
Brian won't how to read Christmas.
It went covered.
As a guy who grew up on the East Coast, where you used to go dig up in the backyard.
He's still talking, Tiffany. He's still talking.
Yeah, it's, when I first came here twenty-five years ago, I had to immerse myself in this. I've told Reed this story, so I decided I wanted to learn about water rights and I signed up for a, a three-day conference and educational, and it was a continuing legal education conference. And after about two hours, I'm like, I made a bad decision to come to this for three days, so.
All right, now that Keith's done, we'll have, uh.
Oh, he's not done?
Shh, we can, we're making positive thoughts, Reed, positive thoughts.
Yeah, I'll switch these.
So next up, we're gonna talk about procurement policy changes, uh, which is a result of, it's ballot, ballot the last year.
Fifteen slides in twenty minutes.
City manager's quick with the intro. So, um, this is actually step one, as you'll hear tonight. We, you know, our, our, our purpose for this year is, since that election is to move our procurement policies into the code from the charter. And this is step one tonight. We've been working on, under the old charter. Uh, we've had some turnover in our, in our procurement staff, our, our procurement manager. We've been trying to time some of this work, especially the next steps, which are the actual ordinance and then policies to our, our having a new procurement manager, hopefully with some experience, some municipal procurement experience, who can help us really put the right policies in, in place. I won't belabor the point tonight, but we were hopeful that we had someone and we don't. So we're gonna have to kind of look at this, at the actual policy piece. And we will bring, we'll have an update for you, but our, our goal is tonight, we just want to kind of surface some of the higher level policy provisions that the ordinance will have. Instead of bringing you fifteen pages of, of ordinance, we wanted to just kinda focus on the big decisions that you, that you might have to make about policy, check in with, with you on those. Then we'll come back. And I'm gonna turn over to Tiffany to walk us through what those, what those recommendations are, this is twenty-four pages of ordinance, but I'm just counting. Right.
All right. This is slow, okay.
You look great.
So just three kinda things we're looking at tonight. Um, this is as a result of the approval of the twenty-twenty-two procurement ballot question. We are gonna recommend some key changes to our, our procurement provisions that I wanna discuss and kinda go over this evening. And then I'll explain kinda the, the next steps of this. As you're aware, citizens did approve a change in our charter in November of twenty-twenty-two to essentially remove any reference to procurement. Let's get that out of the charter, section's ninety-seven, one hundred and one oh three. And let's put that in our code and allow council the decision to make changes as needed throughout the years. So what we did is we've been working over the past few months since the passing of the charter changes, and we have several areas that we wanna kinda capture this evening. Our charter was established in nineteen fifty-nine, it was last revised in nineteen ninety-four. It's outdated, no longer limiting thresholds. There's too many bid requirements that delay purchasing decisions, and it's very burdensome for our vendors, and that's a key point. Vendors struggle getting through some of our processes. If they're smaller companies, it's hard for them to adhere to some of the bid requirements. So we wanna kind of change that a little bit. We did some comparisons throughout other cities. We certainly are the farthest behind in updating our thresholds. We had the lowest thresholds. And we'll talk a little bit more about what some of those are. We have to accept lowest bid. We're gonna look at some best value changes, and then we have some limitations on our contract length. So we really have about fifteen or so key points, but some of the main ones are procurement thresholds. So currently, we have to go out to bid or RFP for anything that's over five thousand or ten thousand. So five thousand capital, ten thousand non-capital. Again, this is from nineteen fifty-nine. Five thousand and ten thousand meant a, a, a different purchasing allowability back then. So we wanna change that. So what we're recommending is for capital two hundred and fifty thousand and for non-capital a hundred thousand. This is really in line with a number of other cities. It also kinda matches what we are looking at for Littleton. We'll talk about some of the comparisons here in a minute, but another one is signature authority. So currently, the city manager approves and signs all contracts. We wanna change that a little bit. We wanna give some flexibility to the department so that they have the ability to sign contracts to get those things going quicker and moving forward sooner, that aligns with their goals. So currently, it's about ten thousand. We do have some thresholds, a little bit lower internally. But the new would be, anything over a hundred thousand would be signed by city manager, and anything over five hundred thousand would be brought to city council. And we'll develop a process for that. This is pretty normal in other cities. So we've kinda looked at some of the changes that, or some of the council communications and information they provide to their councils. And so we're gonna come up with the prescribed process. And hopefully include enough information related to that contract, the bidding, some other areas, to give you enough information related to that contract.
I will just comment here, this is a fairly standard practice that most cities, we're one of, of, again, very, very few where the council sees no contracts. That it's, it's all, right now, it's, it's all vested in the hands of the city manager. But while some, for some reasons, that's, that's, that's okay and efficient. I also think that there's probably a level of contract that benefits from some public visibility, some council awareness of the, the contracting award decisions that we're, we're making. We plan, as Tiffany said, we think we can do that with some expedience if we use the consent agenda of your, where, where council, the public can see what these contracts are. And council can certainly pull things, but we, but you wouldn't have to. I would guess that if we do them well, we present the information you need, it would, you know, those would, would likely be informational largely and kinda serve that the, the daylighting function that I, I, I think is, is, is important, just for.
Now, I will say, if council starts word smithing a hundred-page contract, we're gonna have problems.
Right.
Peggy, Peggy Coleback.
Bring Peggy back.
Peggy.
She'd be happy to help.
Miss Cole.
You missed a comma here, Reed. Start over.
So those thresholds are on original contracts. You know, a number of times, we have change orders to contracts. So we would establish some thresholds on a signature authority for change orders. So currently, it's over ten thousand city manager. We would change this to over ten percent of the original contract would be signed by city manager, and anything over five hundred thousand would still come to city council for any of those.
So that would give some staff level authority for minor things that happen in the field to keep projects moving.
And to get to a change order, who is making that approval to consider that change?
It's usually coming from the contractor, and I don't know who Keith's here, but it's usually coming from the contractor out in the field.
Insta.
So they come across something that's not normal, they didn't anticipate, and it's gonna.
Well, I know what a change order is, but who is giving that approval at the city to say, yeah, that is what we need to do?
Right, so there's, we have a process for that. So if it's less than twenty-five percent of the contract, it goes through the project manager, it goes to the city manager, and it'll go through finance.
Save the time.
Sorry.
City manager.
City manager, yeah, cause it, it may be a change we don't wanna do.
Right.
All right, okay, cool. Thank you.
Sorry. And then another change is procurement method. So currently, we're required to do a lowest price, and we wanna incorporate best value because you don't always wanna go with the lowest price.
How do you determine best value? I mean, it's intuitive, but is there some sort of formula?
Criteria, there's criteria.
Yeah, there's some criteria. You know, it could be based on experience with them. It could be based on experience with other jurisdictions,
Timing.
time, completion. So there's a number of factors that we'll incorporate with that.
Is it an exact formula or just?
No.
No, just a list?
It's not.
A Google review.
Trust me, it would help us with some contracts.
It might.
And I would say, as we get into more of the three A funding and some of the larger infrastructure projects that city council is gonna be set to identify over the future, I think having this in place, allowing for these change orders to go to the city manager is gonna be beneficial to the city as we get into the, kind of the high dollar amount type contracts.
Yeah. We talked about bid thresholds. So we're recommending a hundred thousand. This kinda tells you and shows you where we are in line with some other jurisdictions. This really is gonna impact public works and mostly because their projects are such large dollar projects. As far as going over two hundred and fifty thousand, I think the biggest key here too is non-capital. So currently, anything over ten thousand has to go to a RFP process. So by raising this to a hundred thousand, it eliminates a number of RFPs that were required currently to take to an RFP process. It gives us a lot more flexibility to move forward with projects and, and contracts much quicker than going through an RFP process.
At the same time, our policies will still encourage, you know, and foster competitive. And we, the whole, you know, the whole purpose here is to be competitive with the public business. So we still wanna have, you know, expectation for, for obtaining quotes from, having a simpler process with vendors outside of the formal RFP process. So those kinds of expectations will be built into the policies that we have within these thresholds, the council will adopt.
And that, and that essentially is, is ever who needs it, whatever department needs it, they write a, a, a single source justification why they wanna do it, and they're not going out to bid.
That, or they can just put out the need in a paragraph to the vendors that we, that are out there.
Yeah, it's not a huge deal.
It's less than a full RFP.
But it has to be documented somewhere online, yeah.
We will always encourage RFPs, but this gives the flexibility of not having that certain requirement over ten thousand.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
When did we approve in November? Didn't we approve a hundred thousand dollar threshold?
No.
We didn't approve any thresholds. It was just removing the language from the city charter.
No, just made it to.
Of the charter.
Okay.
And we're gonna put it in the code, and that's what we're talking about. Yeah, yeah. So this is that next step.
Okay, got it. So we take it.
Okay.
Which also means we can change it again.
Correct.
Who's record, yeah.
It's gonna have been.
It's more flexible and it's not stuck in nineteen fifty-nine, right?
You measure them five minutes, Tiffany.
And then we had some comparisons in here on bringing contracts to council. It's five hundred thousand dollars. It does put us at the top, but I think we're, you know, planning for the future, right? Costs are gonna go up, contracts are gonna continue to increase in price. And so I think this sets us up for, you know, the next five, ten, fifteen years potentially.
Well, we did the, the, the research. We've seen that many of the cities have not updated their thresholds. So as they do, they'll be more, more in line with what we'll be.
Yeah. So just a few more is cooperative purchasing. In the past, we've been limited to within one year. Now we'll expand that to within the last three years. This is one thing that we're gonna encourage departments to utilize cooperative purchasing. Someone else does the bid process for you, you can piggyback on it. That's essentially what that is.
Does that have to come to council because it's more than one year?
No, no. Nope.
And, and on the sole source, different than the single source. So, and, and that one, again, it has to be documented why we're.
Correct.
Like radios, for instance.
Yeah, we have criteria for the sole source. And, and just because we're, we're bored.
And, and, okay, yeah. It just wasn't in here.
Yeah, yeah. Professional services, we will allow for, for continued exemptions, but we are narrowing the scope of that definition for professional services. Contract terms, so we currently are two years or less. We are gonna expand up to three years or less, but again, this will be in the code, so we can come back and change it if we feel like it's not working. And then I mentioned other RFPs every three years. We're gonna recommend RFPs or require them every three years, and then sole source contracts over a hundred thousand to be approved by city manager.
No, that's right.
A couple of others, alternative bid schedules greater than five hundred thousand would be approved by city council as well. And then we would build in some design bid build, some other delivery options for contracts, or contractors, since we're gonna be looking towards a lot of projects.
It's an alternative bid schedule.
We'll talk about that.
Well, I think it's fair to ask, it, well, if the council would like to hear.
We got eight minutes.
We got eight minutes.
We have, how long?
Well, we have eight minutes until the Zoom starts, when you get a change order or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some alternative project delivery options are design bid build and CMGC. So we've used CMGC in the past. It's not specifically allowed in our code, but we, we have allowed it in the past. We wanna incorporate that language into our new policy. So that, we did that when we did the fire station, Station Nineteen, where you, help me here, Reed. Where you hire a, this is where I need to.
Oh, you can. Well, are, sorry, I'm more familiar with CMGCs, which is.
Right. So that's just one alternative method. And then there's some others that we're exploring internally.
Yeah, CMGC is pretty much the way that most are going for typical types of public works type projects that we would most likely see.
Right.
Bring your contractor on along during design so that there's some, there's some collaborative understanding of what will be needed down the line, you get better price.
Right. Instead of parsing it out.
I think the, the point is having more flexible options to go through and do this is.
Right, because it depends on your project, what type of project you're building, and as to which design method might be better for that project.
City manager is still on the hook on everything, so that's what counts.
So we talk about next steps. So the next step is, we have already drafted an internal, um, chapter fifteen of the city code. It's a draft. So, so we've already drafted that. And so we're gonna refine that, and what we would like to do is bring that draft back to council, have you look at it specifically. It probably will be pretty lengthy, so we'll wanna make sure that you understand every piece of that. And really, that's gonna set some of those higher level thresholds. So a hundred thousand for council or for city manager, five hundred thousand for council. The next step would be creating the actual procurement policy, and that will define some of those lower level authorities. You know, allowing department directors to sign some certain contracts. And so that'll be incorporated into the actual policy. So those are really the next steps. We would bring a draft on July eighteenth for a first reading and then a second reading thereafter.
As much as I know Jim loves to see how much the dancing Santas cost.
Right.
I know he does not.
I tell people that I sign contracts for dancing Santas all, all the way through the multimillion dollar infrastructure projects that we have, so.
Right, yeah.
That's not an efficient use of your time.
To get departments doing most of those.
Yeah, for example, last year, the city, or the last three years, city manager approved two hundred and eighty-two contracts. Under our new process, it would probably be about five.
Cool.
Any questions?
I know that was super quick and probably confusing, but.
Wanna check in on those just policy levels and those policy provisions tonight.
Would it ever make sense to have dual signature?
Um, we really actually have.
I'll tell you, one thing I'll be looking for is, you know, a little more explicit department director recommendation, even so that I, so that we have some documentation that, you know, it's not only my signing off, but that the department director who's closer to the project also recommends this, this contract.
Yeah.
You know, it's not only my signing off, but that the department director who's closer to the project also um recommends this this contract.
I mean, we have a contract approval process, so it goes through the attorney, it goes through finance, it it goes through city manager, so there's.
Sure. And legal's involved on all contracts.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Great.
Yeah. So we will see you on July eighteenth with the draft of the chapter fifteen of the new city code.
Can't wait.
Hundred pages, huh?
It'll be less than fifty.
Nope.
It was twenty-four to begin with.
Twenty-four.
It's exciting. It's all in legalese, right?
It's twenty-four.
Right, right.
Alright, any report?
Questions?
Any questions? I think if there was any questions, any report from the city manager?
Yeah. I think, uh, we covered the sinkhole upfront, that was gonna be the one thing, so.
There you go. City attorney?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Alright, so study session's adjourned and we got four minutes and we'll.